I agree.
Uh-oh.
All in this meeting to order, will you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll start with a roll call.
Council President Prince.
Here.
Councilmember Perez.
Here.
Reverend.
Here.
Councilmember Alberston.
Here.
Councilmember Rivera.
Here.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
Here.
Here.
And Councilmember McGurven.
Here.
A roll call, Mr. Mayor, all present.
All right, thank you, and tonight we're going to start off with a proclamation. It's LGBTQIA+ Pride Month.
Hey, proclamation, whereas the month of June was designated Pride Month to honor the 1969 Stonewall riots, universally acknowledged as the catalyst of the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, intersex, and asexual LGBTQIA+ rights movement, and whereas Washington State and King County have remained at the forefront in safeguarding the civil rights of our lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, intersex, and asexual community members, coworkers, friends, and family, and whereas acknowledging the progress achieved thus far, we recognize the need for continued efforts toward greater equality, inclusion, and whereas the city of Renton, through active partnership and communication with residents, businesses, and educational institutions commits itself to fostering an inclusive environment that affords opportunities for all, and whereas lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, intersex, and asexual residents enrich the cultural tapestry of our community generously giving their time, talent, labor, and financial support to various community organizations, and whereas to express our solidarity with the LGBTQIA+ community, the pride flag will be proudly displayed at Rent City Hall from June 10th through the 14th, 2024. Now therefore, I, Armando Pavoni, Mayor of the city of Renton, do hereby proclaim June 2024 to be LGBTQIA+ Pride Month in the city of Renton, and I encourage all residents to join in the special observance, recognizing and celebrating the contributions of LGBTQIA+ individuals within our community, and witness thereof, I have heretofore set my hand to cause the seal of the city of Renton to be affixed this 10th day of June 2024. Signed, Armando Pavoni, Mayor of the city of Renton.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Council President.
I move we adopt the proclamation as read.
Thank you.
Okay, it's been moved by Council President Prince, second by Councilmember Rivera, that the proclamation be adopted as read. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. All right, motion carries, and tonight to accept the proclamation is Sarah Palmer, Renton Pride Presiding President.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank the council for the proclamation again this year and the wonderful pride ceremony as flag-raising ceremony this morning and the beautiful video that came out already. We're receiving beautiful social media feedback from that already. It's very meaningful, especially with some of our neighboring cities not acknowledging Pride Month, and so we really appreciate that you acknowledge these citizens, this community here, and that I do want to add that this Friday, we have a art market celebrating more of our local artists in the community here at the Renton Piazza, and I do invite everyone to come join us, and we look forward to seeing everyone there, and it was wonderful to see you all this morning. Thank you.
All right, thank you, and we're going to take some pictures next, please.
Lynette, if you were to stand, you can stand up and take questions.
Okay, next up is the administrative report.
All right, good evening, everyone. The Equity Commission will meet on Tuesday, June 11th, 2024, at 5:30 PM in the council chambers. The agenda includes an update from Parks and Recreation and Communities and Schools of King County on how the city supports vulnerable youth through strategic partnerships and programs. Do you have a favorite local business in Renton that deserves some recognition? Here's your chance to honor those people who create and build businesses that serve our community by nominating them for the King County Small Business Awards. Categories include Small Business of the Year, Minority-Owned Small Business of the Year, Workforce Development Small Business of the Year, and others. Submit your nomination by June 30th at kingcounty.gov/smallbusinessesawards. Information about preventative street maintenance traffic impact projects and road closures happening this week can be found at rentonwa.gov/traffic. All projects are weather permitting, and unless otherwise noted, streets will always remain open.
All right, thank you. Next up, we have audience comments. I want to remind everybody that all remarks must be addressed to the council as a whole. If response is requested, please provide your name, address, including email address to allow for a follow-up. Each speaker is allowed three minutes. When recognized, please state your name, city of residence. For the record, there's also a timer right up front. When the little light turns yellow, please start wrapping up your comments. And first up is Michelle Black. Michelle? No? Bait racing? Let me see. Okay, we're going to move on to Ellie Robershaw.
Hi, my name is Ellie Robert Shaw. I'm a Renton resident and was a member of the steering committee for the Raise the Wage Renton campaign. I want to address the proposal that the city overturned, Initiative 2302. Initiative 2302 was conceived of and run by Renton residents who were inspired by similar successful measures in neighboring Tuck Willa and Sea-Tac. It was funded primarily by the Democratic Socialists of America, a nationwide organization interested in empowering workers, which is itself funded by member dues. The initiative was also funded by half a dozen labor unions that represent thousands of Renton workers. It was endorsed by several local elected officials, including three Renton City Council members. The signatures were gathered via hundreds, if not thousands, of volunteer hours from Renton and South King County residents. The community's support was incredible. Even people that could not formally volunteer would take home blank sheets to fill them out among their family and friends. I'll say it again, the community's support was incredible. Anyway, this is a wholly Renton-based initiative. It is not from anywhere else. It is from Renton. So, anyway, the council had the opportunity to adopt this measure in December. If they did, I believe they could have had the opportunity to make changes to it. The council declined to do so. The initiative was then put on the ballot. It won the February special election with 58% of the votes. That should mean a lot to the council. Renton voters want an increased minimum wage. I don't know how much more clearer it gets than that. I think that the council, exploring routes to overturn this election, has been proposed. I honestly thought that that would be business here today. I must have been misinformed, it's not. Okay, anyway, but it was proposed by someone last week, so I just thought that I would address it. I just want to say that I think that even looking at that, which showed a certain level of contempt for Renton voters, same with trying to change the law after the fact. I urge the council not to make this mistake and to respect the voters and the democratic process. Thank you.
All right, thank you, and Sarah, you're signed up. I assume that was to speak on the proclamation earlier, yeah. Okay, thank you very much, appreciate your comments. I do want to point out for the record that the council has actually taken no action and they've given no direction on the minimum wage, so at this point, it's just been conversations with small businesses coming and talking to us and giving us their feedback and opinion, so. Okay, next up is the consent agenda. Yes? Oh, that's right, I have one virtual. We haven't had a virtual in a while, thank you. You must be muted, I can't hear you. Barely.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mayor, City Council, my name is Diane, and I'm here on behalf of the Rent Chamber of Commerce. We are presenting concerns again brought forward by our local businesses regarding the recent initiative 2302. After reviewing the matter in its entirety, including the, and most importantly, upon the failures on the part of King County elections and their processes, the chamber is again requesting that City Council refer this matter back to the administration for further consideration. Councils heard about the impact of the initiative being disproportionately severe on the service and hospitality industry sectors that have already worn the brim of the COVID-19 pandemic. As you've heard directly from some of our business representatives, the implementation of this initiative is extensive and poised to negatively affect some of our hardest industry. We're already seeing an alarming number of businesses' slow entry-level positions being eliminated, hiring and employment freezes taking place, and business owners selling their establishments or working to relocate out of Renton. This is an alarming trajectory for our local economy. Crucially though, this initiative was proposed without any stakeholder input and was an initiative developed in another community with a different demographic, business composition, and routine and service traffic. All points that we raised to the council beforehand predicting very outcomes that were now being unfolding. But moreover, and most importantly, we have identified two instances where King County election actions be questioned for their legality, either interpreting the intent of voters independently or failing to upload the initiative for public awareness. Such actions undermine the democratic process and should concern all councilmembers regarding of your state regardless of your stance on Initiative 2302. As well as elected officials, you have a duty to the residents of Renton who are contributing to the cause to bring forward the special election this January, to ensure the processes were done according to law and under correct process. The residents of Renton receive what they are paying for, including proper process by King County elections, not the very failure and advice of the general public what the initiative was all about. Despite these concerns, we respectfully urge the City Council to refer this matter back to the administration for the prudent review. Thank you for your time and attention for the present issue.
All right, thank you. I believe that's everybody at this point. So, next up is the consent agenda. There are eight, are there six items for council consideration? Are there any you would like pulled for separate discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Council President.
I move we adopt the consent agenda as published.
Okay, it's been moved by Council President Prince, second by Councilmember Alberston, that the consent agenda be adopted as published. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. All right, motion carries. We are on to unfinished business, Council President Prince.
Unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Perez.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The Planning and Development Committee has one report to present.
Planning and Development Committee, committee report, this is regarding the continued pooling of SHB 1406 sales tax credit funds. The Planning and Development Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to, one, continue to pool SHB 1406 sales tax credit funds with the South King Housing and Homeless Partners, skip, under the existing interlocal agreement, Contract 21-177, and, two, direct staff to provide an update and recommendation by June 15th, 2026, on continued pooling for 2027 and beyond. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Perez.
I move that the council concur with the recommendation of the Planning and Development Committee committee report.
Thank you.
It's been moved by Councilmember Perez, second by Councilmember Alberston, that the council concur with the Planning and Development Committee report. Any discussions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. All right, motion carries. Let's see here, we're on to Councilmember Van.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Alberston.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the Community Services Committee has one report.
This report is regarding the repealing Rent Municipal Code, Chapter 2-22, the Renton River Days Advisory Board. The Community Services Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the ordinance to repeal in its entirety Rent Municipal Code, Chapter 2-22, Renton River Days Advisory Board. The committee further recommends that the ordinance regarding this item be presented for first reading at tonight's council meeting. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Alberston.
Move that the council concur with the Community Services Committee committee report.
Thank you.
It's been moved by Councilmember Alberston, second by Councilmember McGurven, that the council concur with the Community Services Committee report in discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I have a question, since I'm not in this committee. We're repealing the whole chapter, is it that the advisory, Renton River Days Advisory Board no longer exists, or is it taking another form? If one of my colleagues can speak to that.
It is taking, you want to answer, I can.
I can, what I mean.
Yeah, this is mostly housekeeping. This really is changing the format. There still will be an advisory board representing businesses and restaurants, residents and businesses representing the community when it comes to River Days, so.
That there'll be additional committee members, community members from the business community joining the advisory board, the non-concierge advisory board?
The Renton River Days Advisory Board will no longer be in existence, basically.
Yeah.
That's the thing. Nothing else. No, I mean, oh, you have to vote, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I thought it was on me, forgive me.
Any discussion? All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, nay. All right, motion carries. We are on to Councilmember Rivera.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the Finance Committee has 13 reports.
All right, report one is regarding vouchers. Finance Committee approves the following payments, accounts payable total payment of $17,877,724.31 for a number of payroll, or a number of vouchers, payroll benefit withholding vouchers, and eight wire transfers. Two is payroll, $3,918,443.23 for payroll vouchers that include 1,350 direct deposits and 27 checks. This is both the April 16th to April 30th and May 1st through May 15th pay periods. Three is Kidder Matthews vouchers totaling $33,641.91, and the last thing is the municipal court vouchers totaling $10,610.96. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember O'Halloran.
I move the council concur with the Finance Committee committee report.
Thank you.
It's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, second by Councilmember Perez. The council concur with the Finance Committee report in discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries.
The next report is regarding an agreement with Environmental Science Associates for an update to our critical areas ordinance. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize the mayor and city clerk to enter into an agreement with Environmental Science Associates, ESA, in the amount of $124,194 for professional services to the city of Renton for updating critical areas ordinance and compliance with the Growth Management Act. This, too, is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor.
Or O'Halloran.
I move the council concur with the Finance Committee committee report.
Thank you.
It's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, second by Councilmember Perez, that the council concur with the Finance Committee report in discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries.
All right, the next report is regarding grants from the Port of Seattle. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize the administration to accept the Port of Seattle's Economic Development Partnership Program Award of $60,000 with a city match of $30,000, and the Port of Seattle Tourism Marketing Support Program Award of $20,000 with a city match of $10,000. The committee further recommends authorizing the mayor and city clerk to sign both the agreements. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
I move the council concur with the Finance Committee committee report.
Thank you.
It's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, second by Councilmember Perez, that the council concur with the Finance Committee report in discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries.
The next report is regarding the conversion of a permit specialist position to a planning technician position. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the conversion of an approved budgeted full-time permit specialist position to a full-time planning technician. Conversion of the existing vacant permit specialist, Step A 13, to a planning technician, Step A 15, will result in salary savings of approximately $48,000 for the current year, as the projected hire date to fill this position is September 2024. Additionally, additional annual cost is approximately $9,000, beginning fiscal year 2025. Revenue generated by development services permit fees will cover the additional expense. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
I move the council concur with the Finance Committee committee report.
Thank you.
It's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, second by Councilmember Perez, that the council concur with the Finance Committee report in discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries.
All right, the next report is regarding the request for a limited-term employee construction engineering inspector. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve additional appropriation of $59,705 for 2024, effective August 1st, 24, for salaries and benefits to add a one limited-term employee for a construction engineering inspector. The cost to provide construction inspection for the city's utility capital improvement projects have already been accounted for in the project expenditures, therefore, the interfund transfer from utility fund to the general fund will be reflected in the quarter two budget adjustment to fund this additional limited-term employee. This is also signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember O'Halloran.
I move the council concur with the Finance Committee committee report.
Thank you.
It's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, second by Councilmember Perez, the council concur with the Finance Committee report in discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries.
All right, the next is regarding a fee waiver request. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the fee waivers for the Sky Urban Institute Juneteenth Celebration at Liberty Park, which is $1,850, and the Renton Historical Society Annual Fundraising Gala at the Don Person Senior Activity Center of $1,500. The total revenue impact is $3,350. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember O'Halloran.
I move the council concur with the Finance Committee committee report.
Thank you.
It's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, second by Councilmember Perez, the council concur with the Finance Committee report in discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I'd like to remind the public that the Juneteenth Celebration will be at Liberty Park this Saturday, June 15th, and all public is welcome. Thank you.
Question, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries.
Okay, the next report for the Finance Committee is also a fee waiver request. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the fee waiver request for the Project B Free Fourth Annual Survivor Wellness Symposium at the Renton Community Center. The total impact of this waiver is $4,420, as signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor.
O'Halloran.
I move the council concur with the Finance Committee committee report.
Thank you.
It's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, second by Councilmember Perez, the council concur with the Finance Committee report in discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember O'Halloran.
I'd like to remind the public that this free Survivor Wellness Symposium is also open to the public. Thank you.
All right, any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries.
All right, the next report is regarding a grant for the acquisition of the Stoneway personal. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the resolution authorizing application to the State Recreation and Conservation Office, RCO, for a $1,500,000 youth athletic facilities grant to offset costs of acquiring the Stoneway property adjacent to the Cedar River Park in alignment with the Tri-Park Plan. The committee further recommends that the resolution regarding this matter be presented for reading and adoption. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
I move the council concur with the Finance Committee committee report.
Thank you.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, second by Councilmember Perez, the council concur with the Finance Committee report in discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, nay. All right, motion carries.
The next report is regarding an agreement with Burke Consulting for the Parks Recreation and Natural Area Plan update. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize the mayor and city clerk to enter into a professional services agreement with Burke Consulting in the amount of $274,801 for consulting services in support of updating the Parks Recreation and National Natural Areas Plan. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
I move that the council concur with the Finance Committee committee report.
Thank you.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, second by Councilmember Perez, the council concur with the Finance Committee report in discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries.
All right, the next report is regarding addendum to the contract with Ivors. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the five-year contract addendum with Ivors Incorporated at Jean Coulon Memorial Beach Park, effective April 7th, 2024, to April 30th, 2029, in the amount of $110,000 and 12% net of sales above $1.1 million, plus leasehold excise tax in the amount of 12.84% of the rent annually. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor.
O'Halloran.
I move the council concur with the Finance Committee committee report.
Thank you.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, second by Councilmember Perez, that the council concur with the Finance Committee report in discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries.
All right, the next report is regarding a new lease with a company called Evergreen Refreshments. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the lease with Renton Business Ventures doing business as Evergreen Refreshments for two years, effective June 1st, 2024, to May 31st, 2026, in the amount of $56.94 per month, plus state leasehold excise tax of 12.84%, in the amount of $7.31 for a total monthly rent of $64.25. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember O'Halloran.
I move the council concur with the Finance Committee committee report.
Thank you.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, second by Councilmember Perez, the council concur with the Finance Committee report in discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. All right, motion carries.
All right, the next report is regarding an agreement with Mackenzie Engineering for the City Hall first-floor remodel. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the professional service agreement with Mackenzie Engineering, Inc., in the amount of $119,000. The work performed under this amendment includes all design services necessary to complete the city portion of the programming and conceptual design for the City Hall first-floor lobby remodel. The scope of work is focused on developing and choosing an option to move public-facing departments to the lobby while eliminating the need for non-city employees to have access to floors other than the main lobby. All work is anticipated to be completed by December 31st, 2024. This, too, is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember O'Halloran.
I move the council concur with the Finance Committee committee report.
Thank you.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, second by Councilmember Perez, that the council concur with the Finance Committee report in discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries.
Okay, the final report for the Finance Committee is regarding an agency agreement with the Washington State Department of Transportation for the South Seventh Street Corridor Improvements Project. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the local agency agreement and prospectus with the Washington State Department of Transportation for the obligation of grant funding in the amount of $1,669,020, and all subsequent agreements necessary to accomplish construction of the South Seventh Street Corridor Improvements Project. This, too, is signed by the committee chair. This, too, is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember O'Halloran?
Not sure, but I think 13 is a record. So, with that, I move that the council concur with the Finance Committee committee report.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, second by Councilmember Perez, that the council concur with the Finance Committee report. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All right, motion carries. I don't know if it's a record, but that was a lot.
It was a lot.
Okay, Councilmember McGurven?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
All righty, we are on to legislation. We have one resolution, one ordinance for first reading.
Hey, this resolution is regarding the grant funding for the Stoneway parcel. Resolution of the City of Renton, Washington, authorizing the submission of an application for grant funding assistance for a youth athletic facility project to the Recreation and Conservation Funding Board for the Stoneway parcel acquisition.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember O'Halloran?
I move the resolution be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, second by Councilmember Perez, that the resolution be adopted as read. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All right, motion carries.
All right, the ordinance is for first reading only, and it's regarding the repealing of Chapter 2-22 of the Rent Municipal Code. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, repealing Chapter 22, Rent River Days Advisory Board of Title II Commissions and Boards, authorizing corrections, providing for severability, and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Alberston?
I move that the ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Alberston, second by Councilmember McGurven, that the ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. All right, motion carries. We are on to new business. Council President Prince?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. On Monday, June 17th, 2024, the committee at a whole meeting is canceled. We will have our council meeting here in council chambers at 7:00 PM, and also by video conference. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Perez?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
All right, Councilmember Van?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Utilities Committee has a meeting on June 17th, 2024, Monday at 4:15 PM. It's going to be at the council conference room, and you can also join via, via video conference. We have two items on the agenda. One, change order number 12 with Laser Underground and Earthworks Incorporated for the Thunderhill Sewer Interceptor Rehabilitation Project. And two, agreement with David Evans and Associates Incorporated for the Springbrook Terrace Pond Water Quality retrofit project. And I also want to take this opportunity to thank our community members who come to speak, and welcome Equity Commissioner Gabriel Jones for being here. Thank you for joining us.
All right, Councilmember Alberston?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rivera?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. If no one is, if anyone's going to be missing in committee at the whole next week, I invite them to the Public Safety Committee hearing, which will be happening at 5:00 PM. We have five items on the agenda.